We're just waiting for our streaming video to come up and it just came up.
Yay. Hi, everybody. Thanks for joining us. This is really interesting. So we'll go ahead and get started with our meeting. With that, we'll do roll call. Beverly Hills?
Is your audio live?
Is your mic on? Try it again.
Yeah. Beverly Hills is here.
Burbank?
Here.
Comnet?
Can't hear you, Matt.
Comnet is here.
Perfect. That's better.
INSB?
Here.
Pomona?
Yeah, you know what? It might be a little bit more than that. I'll talk to them right now.
Here. Culver City? Try again. Culver City?
Culver City is here.
Monobello?
Monobello is here.
Pasadena?
Pasadena is here.
And Santa Monica?
I see Santa Monica. I don't hear Adam, but I see him.
There is.
You know.
All right. The agenda for the October 1st, 2020 Governance Board Meeting was posted on September 28th on the ICI website and the bulletin board outside Glendale City Hall. Item two, oral communications. No cards.
Communications.
Item three, reports and information. Reports regarding changes in product, project status from the previous month. Beverly Hills?
No report.
Burbank?
No change.
Comnet? Comnet?
No report.
INSB?
No reporter.
Pomona?
Mike, I saw you unmute, but I can't hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Much better.
Pomona had nothing. Sorry about that.
No worries. Glendale?
Nothing to report.
Culver City?
I get my phone. Nothing to report.
Monobello?
No, nothing to report. Thank you.
Pasadena? Pasadena, do you have anything to report?
Nothing from Pasadena.
And Santa Monica?
Nothing from Santa Monica.
Item B, report on efforts of T-Band Task Force and status of legislation.
Yes, Madam Vice Chair and Mr. Chair out there in TV land and Board. There's a lot going on with the T-Band legislation. I hope you all saw that I put out that email last week with the good news that HR 451, the T-Band bill, had passed in the House with a very wide margin of success. There were only five dissenting votes, one of whom was an independent, four of whom were a Republican, and it was just a resounding display of support for the whole T-Band effort on the House side. It has, of course, moved on to the Senate, and we're waiting for action on the Senate. Something that just occurred less than an hour ago is that there was a motion made by Senator Schumer that they take a vote on supporting HR 451 in its entirety as adopted by the House and that it be passed at the Senate level. That was immediately quashed by Senator Cruz's office, who we had believed to be a friend of the T-Band effort. Senator Cruz's office denied the effort to have a unanimous vote and has asked that there be further discussions regarding the T-Band. His staff later, in discussions with members of our T-Band Task Force, advised them, particularly through the International Fire Chiefs Association, advised that Senator Cruz is interested in involving some other spectrum in this discussion. So we're back to where we essentially have some Senator's office seeking to do a hostage exchange between the T-Band and some other spectrum that's yet to be identified. We're not sure exactly what spectrum this involves, but they are entertaining several different pieces of spectrum that they would like to involve as replacing T-Band on the auction shelf. So stay tuned on that. I would expect that we're going to have some further movement relatively quickly. This is a high priority with a number of members of the Senate, including Republican and Democratic members, and so I don't see it being stalled for very long. I think there's going to be a relatively quick resolution moving this forward. So stay tuned on HR 451 as it moves forward.
Exciting stuff, Ray.
No bad news yet.
No bad news.
Item C, report on the status of the Motorola Solutions 7.18 SUA project.
Yes, Chair and Board members, we have essentially completed our SUA at 7.18. They're putting the finishing touches on it, and I know we've actually been in discussions with Motorola all morning this morning, finalizing the billing for the final milestone payment. And Gordon, can you confirm that 7.18 is in place in the system?
Yes, it is in place and operational. Two weeks ago, the final bullet list item was accomplished, and on the 24th, I gave Motorola the final acceptance.
Any questions on the 7.18? It's up and running.
Thanks, Ray.
Item D, report on the status of the ISI connectivity with LA RIX.
Yes, and Madam Chair and Board, some more good news. We actually have installed our, essentially, our jumper cables to complete the connection between ICI and LA RIX up on Mount Lee, which is the LA City communication site. There's just some final legwork to be done up there. We have both LA RIX staffers and LA City staffers involved in completing this effort. Gordon has been in constant contact with representatives, engineers from both of those entities, and if I'm not mistaken, Gordon, correct me if I'm wrong, we're looking at probably having the last mile of this connection closed probably in the next 30 days?
I hope so. All of the ICI items are done. We've configured our system and connected the patch cables that go down to where LA City will connect us to the ISI switch, which will in turn connect us to LA RIX. I don't know anything about the status beyond where we handed it to, other than that I have heard those other entities, ITA and LA RIX, are proceeding.
And I should add that the LA City Mayor's Office, the Office of Homeland Security, has been very instrumental in working with Gordon and myself and the others and making this a priority with the LA City resources to get the two big systems connected. So we anticipate that being done in the very near future. Meanwhile, LA RIX status is nearing testing capability. They still have some infrastructure items that they're working on. There's several sites that have not been completed. They're also working on juggling some spectrum changes with respect to some interference that they've been experiencing on the T-Band system that they had in place. But they're nearing the point where they're going to be doing a lot more live testing, and at which point we'll actually be able then to live test the ISI connectivity between us and LA RIX. There's also a good amount of dialogue that's taken place about connecting all of the systems together. This is not just the existing ISI that we're working on now between ICI and LA RIX, but also connecting into the various LA City systems in Long Beach and perhaps even some surrounding counties. We're in talks with Motorola, exploring the feasibility of using their cloud systems much more cost-effective than running independent ISSIs between each connectivity point, and also might be a much more efficient way of doing business in the first place because they're already handling all that traffic, and it's just a matter of using their technology and their capability of looping us all together. So that, again, would be probably an opportunity for seamless roaming through multiple, multiple systems using those technologies. So we'll have more information on that as we move forward. But the ISI is almost done. Questions?
Doesn't look like it. Thank you, Ray.
Item four, consent items. Item A, approval of the minutes for the June 4th, 2020 meeting.
Motion from Pasadena.
Is there a second?
Second from Comnet.
We'll do roll call. Beverly Hills?
Yes.
Burbank?
Yes.
Comnet?
Yes.
INSB? Glendale?
Yes.
Culver City?
That's a yes for Culver City.
Monobello?
Yes.
Pasadena?
Yes.
Santa Monica?
Try again, Adam. It didn't come through.
Yes.
Thumbs up. There you go.
And Pomona?
Yes.
Item five, action items. Item A, discussion concerning Motorola Solutions' WAVE technology and proposed utilization.
Yes, Madam Chair and Honorable Board members, one of the things that's come along with the modern technology and the advancement of our systems established by Motorola Solutions, especially going into the 7.18 upgrades, is there's additional tools that are available to us. One of them is a system called WAVE Technologies. Our Chair actually asked me to look into employing WAVE several months ago. The WAVE is still pretty much in its infancy, but it is growing, and what it consists of is WAVE will take your smartphone device and allow you to utilize it as a portable radio. Anywhere, anytime, you can have broadband access. You can have access to our radio system, your radio system, the entire ICI radio system. What's exciting about that in my mind is, we're going to discuss the cost of this. It's very cost-effective from the standpoint of what you look at, you're paying now for, you know, handheld or mobile radios that essentially function the same way as far as accessing the system and the difference in cost. In a nutshell, it costs roughly $28,000 per year to license the entire ICI system to employ WAVE devices. When you look at the cost of a single portable radio these days, that's roughly three portable radios in service is the cost of the licensing to license the entire system. When I say it licenses the entire system, that means that any member entity, any subscriber entity, can then employ a number of handheld devices, mobile phone devices, or iPads on the system, and use those as portable radios. This is importantly something that's available to chief officers and staff officers, command staff, where you don't have to have a radio with you at all times. At any time you want to, you can use your electronic device, and you can tune into any talk group essentially on the ICI system, and not just monitor what's going on, but utilize it as a portable for two-way push-to-talk communications. Again, the cost is $28,000 per year for the licensing and accessibility. And then what's interesting is the cost per device is $13 a month to employ on the system. Is that correct, Gordon? It's $13 a month?
$13 a month to employ a smart pad or smartphone in your pocket as a communications device on the ICI system. That seems to me to be very, very cost-effective, and I immediately felt it would be something that, you know, we should discuss with the Board and adopting as a valuable tool for all of our members. Gordon and I have been in talks with Motorola Solutions concerning the costing of ramping up access to the WAVE system. The initial talks, the Motorola costing is the system price to engage on the initial three years was $135,000 and some change in talking with them, and of course, they have a longstanding relationship with us and ICI as far as employing their technologies. Motorola has agreed to entering into the first three-year agreement, including subscription fees and hardware costs of $85,975 to put ICI on the WAVE system, and then that would be followed by renewability at the $28,440 per year thereafter for licensing the entire system. Again, this is the entire system to the WAVE project. Gordon is actually going to clean up any messes I just left with my information, and we perhaps even do a little demo. Sure. Yeah, that's all accurate, Ray. I'm not sure. I heard you say that the $13 per user per month can be billed directly to the member or subscriber agency, so there's no complications through the JPA for billing. Ray is correct. It works anywhere you have Wi-Fi. I have used it with satellite internet on a cruise ship in the middle of the Pacific Ocean, so it works pretty well. Chief Frieders is standing by on the other end of RED 1 for a demonstration. So there's my iPhone. There's the application. Verdugo RED 1. Chief 3, COM 201, radio check. Yeah, I don't know if it came back out of the phone. It was only coming out of the small speaker, but it works quite well, amazingly so. This is absolutely not a replacement for a radio on a operations person's hip. I wouldn't give it to a police officer, a detective while they're on duty. For command staff, chief officers, it's definitely a great solution, especially those who may live out of range of the system or those who are traveling. I used WAVE last summer when I was in Oklahoma, and we had power problems here at the master site. I was able to remain connected to my staff standing in a pool at my cousin's house.
Ray and Arnold, is there any, is there, what's the actual cost after we pay the core fee of $85,000, the ongoing charge?
That $85,000 includes the first three years. It's $28,440 per year to operate the technology on the ICI system. Excuse me. That $28,000 is...
The ongoing forward cost?
Okay, the going forward cost is the same. It's a recurring cost of $28,000 per year to employ that. And again, that is for the entire system and all members and all subscribers to have devices on the system at a cost to them of $13 per device. So it's $28,000 per year recurring. One of the things we're going to be discussing a little bit is our revised budget, and looking at our budget and looking at what we're doing in net revenues, especially with respect to subscriber and roaming fees on the system. This is very affordable for your JPA to engage in. And again, especially when you look at the cost between, the cost advantage of employing this technology, especially for command staff and such as Gordon had mentioned, and the cost of a similar radio, very, very cost-effective and much more convenient for them to carry with.
Do we anticipate paying this out of actual the budget, or are we going to include this and increase our subscriber cost?
No, I don't see a need to increase subscriber costs nor to increase the fees or dues for the member entities. This is easily absorbed with the revenues we have on hand and moving forward.
My only other question is I want to make sure we're very, very clear. This is not a band 14 replacement. You know, some of these people that have ISONAS radios and so forth, their phones, that cost for $13, is that, so that would be per device, per agency. Is there room for negotiation on that? It's a little steep once we pay that core, that initial fee of, you know, 90 grand. You know, I figure some of us might have, you know, 20, 30 devices. That gets, that starts adding up quite a bit. And I start to look at, you know, we've been doing testing with band 14 ISONAS radios and, you know, even through AT&amp;T and Verizon, and those costs, I just see for a Wi-Fi only device, is there any room that we can negotiate that individual device fee down a little bit?
I don't want to say no, because I don't think the answer's ever no when it comes to the opportunity to negotiate or renegotiate cost structures with Motorola or any other provider. However, that is their standard that they're employing with all of the users across the nation right now with respect to WAVE access. What they are negotiating on with us upfront is the hardware and implementation fees going into it. But that's not to say that we can't sit down with them later and try to re-talk that $13. Even then, you know, $13, considering that it's literally replacing an $11,000 radio, I think is a relatively cost-effective number. It is not, it's not a standalone broadband piece of technology like a first net handheld would be. This enables you to utilize it as a first-line communications device on a private system.
Yeah, but you're not using any Motorola cellular or either Wi-Fi. They're not incurring any transport costs. They're, they're just trying to recover their cost for the apps. So, interesting. I just wonder if there's any room for, you know, if we could talk about that device cost, because it will add, it will add up per agency, you know, 13 times 50, that gets, per month, gets a lot.
I have absolutely no hesitation to say that we can cross that bridge with Motorola again down the road. We're not asking for ICI to fund any portion of that device costing at this point. We're just looking at covering the licensing and implementation to get us on board with it, and then it would be up to the individual agencies if they feel that Motorola's price point on their monthly fees for device licensing is worth their...
I, you know, I just got to bring it up. You know, a lot of us, you know, as we migrate to cellular with, through Verdugo, you know, sensitivity's there. You know, we start to see all this increased cost with per device, you know, moving over to cellular backhaul. So it all adds up, and especially right now with the economics of each city. You know, we're trying to save every penny we can.
Absolutely. Any other questions? What staff is recommending is that the Board consider motioning to enter into an agreement with Motorola Solutions to engage the technology of the WAVE technology at a price not to exceed $90,000, which is actually their, their last price point was $85,975.33. That would give the ICI system and all of its members and subscribers the first three years. Then we would revisit the WAVE participation as an annual budget item at an estimated cost of $28,440 per year thereafter, perhaps in three-year increments as we do with their service agreements. But this particular, this item on before you right now is to initiate the project and to fund the licensing and implementation for the first three-year period. And again, the present quote we have, $13 per unit, that would be something that's billed directly from Motorola to the utilizing agency, whether it be a member agency or a subscriber, and it would be billed directly to them, and the number of devices they engage in and the number of talk groups that they include in their device. By the way, I believe it includes 100 talk groups on each handheld device. And is there a limited number of handheld devices, Gordon, or is that open-ended?
Open-ended, as far as I understand. There is something I'd like to correct though, when I may. Jim, regarding not using any services from Motorola, that's actually not correct. There's three ways to do WAVE. There's on-premise, which is what we've set up for and demonstrated, but that gets to be more costly than the option we chose, which is WAVE on cloud. That's the middle. Critical Connect being the third. WAVE on cloud, we are streaming one copy to Motorola servers, which is then being distributed. You talked about costs adding up. So does bandwidth, as I'm sure you know, and at 70 kilobits per channel per user, and it is streamed from on-prem, that service is worth it. Otherwise, we'd keep having to scale up our bandwidth as we added users.
So from master sites up to this cloud is what you're talking about. We're covering that transport cost. All right. Not just, not having a local node back into the sites.
Correct. Yeah, we're sending it to Motorola.
But the last mile or the big mile, you know, whether it's Wi-Fi or the carrier cellular to cloud, that's the big hurdle that we're not, so we're paying a dedicated from the master sites to a cloud provider.
Yeah, to Motorola. They bought WAVE Technologies.
Yeah, yeah, I'm familiar with it. Okay, all right. I'm just saying, you know, as we all migrate into band 14 devices, you know, in the coming year, that will render itself not useless, but that's a transition. Wouldn't you agree?
I must not understand where you're coming from. Band 14 just being a transport mechanism, part of AT&amp;T's infrastructure. You're still going to be paying your cellular phone and data costs.
No, no, no. What I mean by is we'll be carrying, you know, multi-band radio, multiple band devices, and we're going to be transitioning where we can utilize band 14 at our handheld cellular devices and not have to utilize that. That's kind of where we'll be heading. So WAVE will, WAVE, I don't know how WAVE will interact with that down the road. You follow what I'm saying? Do you understand the architecture of it, right?
Well, I understand what you're saying, but it's still, maybe it's something we should discuss offline and bring back. Band 14 doesn't connect to our core. There's no way a band 14 device...
But we will eventually. I mean, you know, so...
Band 14 being an internet, I mean, being a data provider, yes. But in that sense, it's no different from Verizon or T-Mobile.
Absolutely. And we're going to be, we were going to be incurring that cost as well. So we'll talk offline.
Sorry, Ray. Go ahead. Okay. In any case, it's staff's recommendation that the Board consider adopting a motion approving the utilization of the WAVE technology and authorizing an expenditure of not more than $90,000 for an initial three years of service with Motorola Solutions Incorporated.
INSB moves approval. Pasadena second that.
We'll go to roll call. Beverly Hills?
Beverly Hills is a yes.
Burbank?
Yes.
Comnet?
Yes.
INSB?
Yes.
Glendale?
Yes.
Culver City?
Yes.
Monobello?
Yes.
Pasadena?
Yes, from Pasadena.
Santa Monica?
Yes.
And Pomona?
Yes.
Item B, discussion concerning distribution of ICI direct subscriber fees inclusive of roaming fees to host agencies as apportioned by level of utilization estimated by system administrator.
Yes, Chair and Honorable Board, the ICI system presently has four public safety agencies that subscribe directly to the system. These direct subscriptions were by virtue of the fact that at the time that these entities were building out their radio systems, we did not have a single platform network. We were a mixture of P-25 and non-P-25, and so we weren't sure, once these agencies came on board, exactly what cells they were going to be utilizing. So rather than force them into a single-cell subscribership, we adopted them as system-wide subscribers directly to... as, uh, system-wide subscribers directly to ICI, and, uh, what was discussed with the Board at that time, which was roughly two years ago, is that once, uh, we were a single platform and once these, uh, agencies were operating on the platform, that we would do a utilization review of what cells were being employed, uh, by these subscriber agencies and then would redistribute, uh, the funding that's collected from them, the subscriber fees, back to those cells that are supporting them. Uh, what we have presently is we have the, the City of Arcadia, uh, who pays subscriber fees in the sum of forty-six thousand two hundred dollars. Uh, when the system administrator, uh, did a back study, uh, into the system to determine the, uh, level of use between the various, uh, cells, it's found that Arcadia employs the Glendale-Pasadena cell sixty percent of its time and thirty percent of the time is, employs Monobello, and the balance of the time, which is a mixed ten percent, is pretty much system-wise, so it really couldn't break out any particular system that had more utilization than another, uh, because this was probably mostly their roaming that was, uh, being encountered. Uh, the City of Bell, uh, pays, uh, subscriber fees of eight thousand six hundred and forty dollars, ninety-five percent of their utilization is Monobello, uh, the balance of five percent is mixed throughout the system. Uh, the City of El Monte, uh, pays the subscriber fees in the sum of fifty-five thousand nine hundred and twenty, and ninety-five percent of which is also Monobello, the remaining five percent is blended into the entirety of the, uh, the ICI network. And last but not least, this Sierra Madre, uh, the subscriber fees of seven thousand nine hundred and ten, uh, sixty percent of the utilization is on the Monobello cell and thirty-five percent of the utilization is Pasadena-Glendale. Um, if you can see on your agenda, I have broken out, uh, that apportionment as to what it, uh, relates to for each of the cells that are supporting these subscribers, uh, it's a total of one hundred and nine thousand eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars that should be redistributed to those cells that are supporting, uh, the radio activity, the subscriber usage of these four, uh, communication systems. Uh, again, we'll be talking about our budget shortly, but, um, we anticipate in, in this year alone, a subscriber and roaming fee revenues of in excess of two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand dollars. Uh, so returning, uh, that hundred and nine thousand dollars to our members whose systems are actually sustaining these communications, uh, makes perfect business sense. Uh, they are the ones that are, uh, bearing the, the costs and the brunt of supporting, uh, these subscribers on the system, and, uh, this will help them, uh, you know, realize them, uh, a, a cost offset for the, uh, the cost of operations for supporting these subscribers. Uh, therefore, it's Staff's recommendation, uh, that the Board, uh, consider a motion to apportion the fees, uh, as was discussed, uh, between, uh, those collected from Arcadia, Bell, El Monte, and Sierra Madre, uh, to be returned to the Monobello and Pasadena-Glendale systems. The, the Monobello sum of return is seventy-nine thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars, the sum to be returned to the Pasadena cell, Pasadena-Glendale cell is thirty thousand four hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Any questions?
Hearing none. Do you need a motion?
That is a recommendation for the motion.
Do we have a motion for the recommendation from Staff?
Dana, I got it.
Is there a second? Go to roll call.
Culver City seconded it a minute ago, do you hear?
No, sorry, we didn't. We'll put...
Yeah, Culver City seconded.
Thank you. We'll go to roll call, Beverly Hills?
Yes.
Burbank?
Yes.
Omnet?
Yes.
INSB?
Yes.
Glendale?
Yes.
Culver City?
Yes.
Monobello?
Yes.
Pasadena?
Yes.
Santa Monica? Sorry, Adam, we didn't hear you. Thumbs up.
There he goes.
And Pomona?
Yes.
Item six, Board...
Before we move on to item six, I, I just wanted to note that, uh, there is a revised budget attached, which has been adopted by virtue of the approval of these two items. Uh, these, these are the only changes to the originally adopted budget and thus, uh, what's now reflected in, uh, the attached budget, uh, includes the funding, uh, for the, uh, the Wave system and the, the funding to redistribute the subscriber fees back to the member entities, otherwise the, uh, budget as adopted, uh, remains the same. There's no action required on the budget separately.
Okay. Item six, Board Member Comments, Beverly Hills?
Uh, no report, no comment.
Burbank?
Uh, one thing I did forget to mention early on, uh, we did complete, or in the process of completing, and Gordon can probably give a little more information than I can, uh, we did, uh, finish our microwave, uh, Big Loop, our MPLS project, so now we do have, uh, full MPLS capabilities back and redundancies, so that was a, that was a good, good project for us.
Now, very good project, you now, uh, are not looking at my building here as a single point of failure, you do connect to the, uh, DSR, uh, with, uh, when we're coming into Glendale, so in the event of a catastrophic failure here, you'll take, uh, your microwave out to the Big Ring and around to the DSR and, uh, not lose anything.
And I do want to thank Beverly Hills, thank you very much for, uh, that, giving us access and let us work through Walker there as well, so that, 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 that was a big, uh, big benefit for us as well, so now we got full redundancy, fiber optic, uh, multiple waves and, and back to the Big Ring microwave as well, so thank you. Has anybody else migrate, migrated, uh, Gordon to MPLS, uh, through, through the Big Ring as well? How many other, how many participants are, are, are upgraded that way?
Uh, everybody, sir, you were the last one.
Yeah, that's what I thought, all right.
No report.
INSB?
I think that was a no report.
Yes, he's not. Glendale? Uh, nothing, thank you. Culver City?
No report.
Monobello?
Nothing to share, thank you.
Pasadena?
Only thing I have to report is, uh, I have announced my retirement for Pasadena, uh, my last day in the office will be December the seventh, uh, I will be bringing Chief Cuskey onboard as the ICI representative for Pasadena, uh, intend on having him at our next meeting, just to introduce him and sucker, I mean, uh, bring him into the group and, uh, have him sort of be our rep, so I don't know who the alternate will be yet, the fire chief recruitment will start next week, uh, but so far, uh, that's the only significant news we have here at Pasadena, thanks.
Congrats, I think my time on the Board, what does that Ray make, the third or fourth one for Pasadena? Congratulations.
Thanks, buddy, appreciate it.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Santa Monica? Thumbs down, so nothing.
That works.
That works, Adam, thanks. And Pomona?
Nothing for Pomona.
Thank you. Item seven, Staff Comments.
Yes, I just had a, a couple of comments to follow up on, uh, Chief Frieders, uh, who's been absolute pleasure to work with about the last thirty years and a, a variety of different hats that he's worn during that period of time, uh, but I hope, I hope you really enjoy your time in, uh, beautiful green Tennessee, uh, once you get there in December, it'll be, uh, be sweet. Uh, but I also want to mention, we have, uh, Ken Powell, uh, who's now on the Board here, uh, he's, uh, filling the shoes of, uh, Dave White, who is in the process of retiring from Culver City, uh, Ken's the interim fire chief right now, Ken, welcome to the, uh, to the brute. And we also have, uh, Chief Egan from Glendora, who, uh, the last time we met was the, the interim, uh, police chief, he is now the police chief by, uh, by action of the Glendora City Council not too long ago, so congratulations again, Chief Egan, on that. And we also have, uh, Rocky Lopez, who's now onboard Monobello, Rocky is the new, new deputy chief for the Monobello Fire Department, and he will be representing Monobello, uh, on the ICI Board moving forward, so welcome aboard, Chief Lopez.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. Now, can I just, yeah, a couple of things here, um, I am new to this group and, um, I just want to say that, uh, I really got a lot out of this meeting, again, being new, that there's, there's a lot of education to be had here. Uh, one thing I would like to share in retrospect is Glendale is now, uh, supporting our system, that we are now using Glendale to, um, service our system, um, we're in a transition from, uh, foothill communications at this point, uh, which is pretty much concluded, so I want to thank, thank them for all the support and I appreciate all the information and welcoming me into this group.
Hey Ray, it's Greg, I just want to add one thing, just to clarify, uh, Ken is the fire chief, so that happened, uh, a little while ago, so he's not the interim, he is the fire chief, and Dave's ridden off into the sunset here a little while ago, so...
Yes, he has, thank you very much.
They were keeping that a secret. Well, congratulations, Chief.
Congratulations, Brian, thank you.
Excellent, well, that's all I had, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, I appreciate your time today, we'll say the meeting's adjourned at one forty-nine.
Wow, thank you.
Bye-bye, everybody.
Bye, everybody, thank you. Bye, everyone, thank you.